And I would ask that Commissioner Langston lead us in the pledge.
Be anonymous, Chairman. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys for joining us tonight. It's very appreciated to see those of you who are interested in the business of Chilton County. It's not convenient to come out and participate, but it certainly is appreciated for those of us who labor throughout the week and the month to try to make good decisions for you guys. And Jimmy, thank you for your encouraging words and your prayer. Just call the meeting to order and start working through our agenda, guys. I would ask for a resolution to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Steve?
Just a deletion.
A deletion of Steve, okay. I'll make that note. Like a resolution to delete Steve's item from the agenda?
I make a motion, we delete Steve Adams from the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of the April 9th meeting? And if so, could I get a resolution for approval?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for the meeting dated April 1st.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Have you had an opportunity to review the claims?
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills for April 23rd. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, we've come to the public comments section. We have a group here from the New Convert community, and you guys are welcome to address us. With any of your-
Mr. Terry.
Mr. Terry? If you would, come to the mic, Mr. Terry, because we're now videoing our meetings and they're going out for public consumption.
Got to know everybody. I'm raising, y'all look good up there. Put my good words in so I can get some good answers. Mr. Hardy, you must be by New Convert Baptist Church. Well, you talk about Jesus, I think that's on the church, talk about Jesus, I believe it.
Come on now.
But anyway, we here tonight to see how we're staying on our storm shelter. I know back a couple of years ago, we were up on the list next for the shelter. When I would be talking to one, the commissioner said that probably release some money, all the tornadoes we've been having lately. So we wanted to ensure that we still there on the list, on the top list.
As far as I'm concerned, you are. Now, what we need to do, and we had talked about this earlier today when we saw y'all on the agenda, is we need to get Derek Wright, our EMA Director, to stay in contact with the state. Because if they're gonna release any of those funds, it'll be, you know, preceding a disaster like we recently had with the tornadoes. So we need to stay on top of that. But you guys have, you know, we've given y'all our word for years that once more of that money became available, we'd do everything we could to get a storm shelter for you. And we remain committed to that.
Is there a place, I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt.
No, absolutely, I agree. I mean, next on the list. It's just literally about funding, as is everything else in this county.
Forgive me for not knowing the area, the New Covenant area.
New Convert.
New Convert area, or the New Covenant. Is there a place there that we already have in mind to put a shelter? Because that's gonna be a big concern.
Back a couple of years ago, like I said, when we first got started, they asked for the church to deed an acre land to the county.
Right.
So that way, which all the churches had agreed to do that, so.
Well, I want you to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you. I want you to keep in mind too, that when you're thinking about this request too, because we're having to deal with this now, of the maintenance expense of these shelters could predominantly fall on whoever the land belongs to, which would be us, I guess. We're going through that now, all right, Mr. Steve, about who's responsible for the maintenance of them and everything, so. There's not a lot of maintenance to it, and those who are also, keep in mind that when we do something like this, that who's gonna be responsible for opening these shelters and making sure they are all open to the people. So that's something you need to be thinking about in the process of, before we get the money to shelter. And I hope that we have something come through, but we're gonna have to get some federal money to help us with these, or state money to help us with these shelters, because they're very-
Yeah, we talked to them about the land, because we can't build it on private property. And they would have to deed, they'd have to deed an acre to the-
Right, right. The maintenance of it is what I was concerned.
We're working through a kind of a memorandum with the volunteer fire departments that have them now. And that document has not been finished yet, but we're working through a kind of a memorandum of understanding where, what we're responsible for and what they're gonna be responsible for. But the major maintenance of these things, I think the county will be responsible for. But the day-to-day opening and cleaning and upkeep, the community is gonna be responsible for.
No problem.
And there's some, there's a little bit of, I say a little bit, there's a considerable amount of legal obligation, once you have one, to ensure that it's open when warnings go out. And so you'll need to be thinking about people that live close by that, more than one person too, in case somebody's not available, that can open them. Because the last thing you want is to have one that's locked and a tornado come through and people not being able to get in. But I guess we need to get you the money to build it before we worry about the specifics of it, though. But we, we're gonna work on that. We are working on that. But I'll, I'll make contact with Derek personally this week and ask him to get in the pipeline in Montgomery and see if there's any funds gonna become available.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something?
Please.
Mr. Terry, we got some maintenance on some of the existing used-on shelters. So when you see some people working on those, please use the address. When you see us working on them, don't think that we're gonna take them down.
No.
Like, is this the one that you're working on?
That we've already got in place.
Right.
We got some bad maintenance issues, we gotta correct.
Well, not building any new ones, we're just-
I don't stay.
Yeah.
We've got some seals leaking and water running in them and things like that, that we've gotta go back and some painting. We got some of them that had subpar paint when they were delivered, and they're starting to rust prematurely. So we're gonna have to spend a little bit of money, or we're gonna wind up with nothing. But we don't even know where we're gonna get that yet, because our budget's fully extended. But you guys are, you're on the forefront of our mind when we think about, because y'all have been, y'all have been religious about coming and making sure that we didn't forget about it.
We don't wanna be a house of, you know, we won't get the shelter.
Squeaky hinge gets the grease.
And we thank you for your patience and not, not just, thank you for your patience and knowing that we are trying to do our best to make sure that the citizens of this whole county are protected.
That's true.
I was watching the news this morning, they was talking about Alabama's already set a record for tornadoes this year.
So that maybe give us some, release some federal money there, hopefully, so.
One thing that y'all might wanna make sure that some of your community, some of your older people specifically, that don't have smartphones, is that our warning system is not being maintained by the county anymore. So you're not gonna necessarily hear the warnings. As those things quit, we're taking them down.
You're talking about this sirens?
Yes, yeah. So y'all, the older people in the, you know, most everybody that has a smartphone are getting these warnings. But some of the, and I know there are probably younger people without them too, but most, most of the younger people have smartphones, but some of the older people still have a landline or a flip phone. And there's a method to go and register with EMA, so that they'll get a phone call alert. And that's something that y'all might wanna talk about with some of your older people in your church, to make sure they know in the community that they can sign up for that service where it'll be like a telemarketer call, and they'll say, you know, storm warning, or tornado warning, or whatever. But you can receive phone calls absent of the ability to get a warning on a smartphone. We've put it out and we've put it in the paper, but we're not reaching a lot of people, and we're very concerned that people are gonna get caught without an adequate warning. So, you know, remind people to sign up, that's what I'm asking.
No problem. Appreciate it, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
All right, Mr. Clark?
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Commissioner Hardy, you think it's tough being a commissioner, try working for the Department of Revenue.
I don't know, I'd probably, fair to say.
I'm from the government and I'm here to help you.
That's my next line, and I was gonna give you my favorite scripture, of course, is Mark 12:17, render under Caesar that which is Caesar's.
Yeah, okay then.
So anyway, so with the funny jokes aside, I am from the Department of Revenue. I am a revenue examiner. I've been an examiner for 17 years for the state, audited in Birmingham, Huntsville, and Tuscaloosa. And I'm very familiar with our, how our system works. What Sylvia, Sylvia had asked me is to talk to you about administration of local sales and use taxes. That's where the Alabama Department of Revenue will be the ones that collects your sales taxes, deposits the money into your account, will follow up with collections and delinquents, will also be doing the auditing, and if any of the cases go through court, we continue on with that as well. All of this comes at a price. What is that price? The state's fee system is either 2% or 654 per count, which is what we call the per-transaction method. When you look at that page on the right with the green letters, that shows you how we calculate the 2% or the 654. With your, with Chilton County, because your collections are higher than, with the 2%, we go with the per-transaction method, which is good, because that will keep, that was actually less than the 2%, you would be at just 0.11%. So using that, it allows for a good baseline with budgeting when worrying about the administrative costs, whereas your current administrator, when you have to have audits and additional services brought in, there are additional fees that go in with this. So with the state's administration of sales and use tax and auditing and collection, there are no additional fees, I sound like a Verizon commercial, but there's no additional fees, there's no surprises, there's no contract with the state either. We don't make you sign a contract with us. All that's needed is a resolution and a 30-day, 30 to 60-day notice. So what does that entail? Okay, auditing is where we are using lead methods, we're following from previous audits, and we're currently using a method, we call it the RAP system Wholesale Retail Accountability Program. That's where we're using data from wine, beer, liquor, and tobacco distributors to audit convenience stores and those kind of businesses. Previously, as an auditor, when I had to go out and audit, these people didn't have records, we had to go out and send out individual letters and that kind of thing. Now that the state has passed the legislation that they, the distributors have to provide us with that information, we're now able to go in and cover these industries very well. The collections, so in being in the state system, surprisingly, people will report to the state one amount and to a third-party administrator another amount. With being state-administered, we're of course monitoring both of them at the same time. What do we provide? We provide reports to you based upon the top, you know, people, top distributions, top remitters, comparisons to the year before, any statistical reports that the administrator would need, these are provided for you. With, so also taxpayer assistance is included. The state has nine different taxpayer service centers, Mobile, Montgomery, Birmingham. Chilton County is out of Montgomery County. We have local tax analysts, that is, another auditor like myself who's out of the Montgomery District, specializes in your county, these areas. Ms. Riddle, she's unable to come today due to illness with her husband, but she is an auditor, lives in, I think she lives towards, forgot the county, but it's very close. It's not everybody in Montgomery coming out. We have examiners and collections agents, all based out throughout the state. So what does that mean numerically? If you look at that second page with the bar graphs, so Ms. Singleton provided me some information about collections over these past three months, November, December, and October, November, and December. Wow, I'm getting it. So comparing what we would have charged to what you were charged by your current administrator, we would have saved $2,700 over a three-month period. It's maybe $10,000 over a year. Well, you're wondering about how to pay for that front four-year. I wish I could've come up here and come up with $14 million like Walter did, but $10,000. Well, there's also the other side. The last page underneath that is a list of audits that we have done in this area over the past, I think, three to four years. So there's another $37,000 that would have come in as well. When you make those comparisons to what your current administrator does, their fees eat away at that $37,000. I've had the pleasure of helping Marshall County come to the state and Marion County come to the state. And in using examples, I won't say which one, but we did a cost comparison and found that during that time period, they collected $32,500 of audit revenue. That sounds good, except they had fees of $32,700. So in essence, they paid them $200 to take $32,000 out of the county.
Right.
That's where the additional, no additional fees with the state really helps. And when the auditors come in, it's the state seal they see. It's the state backing that they see. And it's the state that does the work. We don't come in and say, the administrator from the county says, we need to audit you. We just come in and do an audit. People, you know, you were talking about, as I was talking about the fear of working for the Department of Revenue, it is the fun thing to walk into a business and see everybody, because you have to make humor for yourself when you're an auditor, because nobody loves you. And I end on the final story, when I was in Tuscaloosa, went to church there, went into Wensels one day, and there was my pastor sitting there and a friend who's an attorney sitting there, and I went down, sat down next to the pastor, I said, you're having a Jesus lunch with a sinner and a tax clerk. To which my attorney friend went, hey.
So how many, how many counties is your department actually collecting for out of 67?
About 15.
About 15.
Many are self-administered, and many have chosen to go with the third-party administrators.
Right, and also, my second question is, when you, so if we have a business in the state that's not paying their taxes, then that is where you will make sure their collections and delinquents.
That's where you don't have to chase them, you don't have to follow them up, you don't have to make sure that you're-
They don't cost us extra for you to do that?
Correct. The money is collected, it's yours, you paid, you paid the administrative fee, that's taken out the 654, and that's it. I've found, I had a city that was administered by their own county, and she was used to going through their taxes and looking over, and she'd have to call and make sure that people were going out and getting everything. And when they changed it over to the state, she was still doing the same thing. And I had to actually send the collections people over to the city clerk's office to explain to her, hey, we have it. It's kinda nice to know you have it.
Right.
And that's what's being taken care of with the full strength of the state.
So in regards to the contract that we're currently on, and I do believe, didn't we end up in a three-year contract with RDS? Isn't that great? Do you know when that expires? Is there an opt-out in that contract, or do we know?
Code of Alabama 42A12, 90 days' notice you can give. This was codified from 2016. Any contract signed after April 1st of 2016 can be eliminated with a 90-day notice.
Any?
Any, well, any with the third-party administrators, yes. So that was as if you were using any of the other companies.
We need to check what our data is before we do anything actionable.
A second benefit of changing over to the state is it shakes, does what I call shaking the nuts out of the trees, and that's the people that are reporting to us and reporting to you something different, or possibly even not even reporting. Because if a business comes and signs up for a state sales tax account number, they're gonna get a local tax account number. But because you're not state-administered, it won't trigger a delinquency for us if they don't file.
Right.
So it becomes the business owner's responsibility to call the third-party and set up that account, and then start having them follow them. And I'm hoping to get you and your additional cities, and then your business owners only have to file in one place, the state's one spot, my Alabama tax system.
So this may be off-base, but what if we have a situation that we have been facing since I've been commissioner, that someone forgot to, either got confused, didn't pay their taxes or anything, and asked for leniency on that? Remember, we had to vote that here? In a business, where do y'all?
Well, if we're the administrator, they would have the tax tribunal to go through. They would have the, it used to be called the Administrative Law Judge, but they call it the Tax Tribunal now.
You go through y'all instead of us?
Yes, yes.
I know in our business, when we file taxes, we already, we file it with the state and the city, we do it all online, is that-
You can file them all through the state's one-spot website, but the information that we get for non-state administer just gets passed on, therefore, we don't use it to make queries, comparisons, make sure the tax rates are right and those kind of things, not the tax rate, the tax amounts are correct.
So in other words, if a business files it and it files it online with the state, then yeah, it just, it goes on and-
We pass it on to RDS. So if Bill's hardware tells the state of Alabama, he had $50,000 in sales, and then he tells RDS, I had $25,000 in sales, we have no way of making a comparison to see if he's telling the truth. That's, I get, good example.
All right.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
We will take it under consideration and try to decide what direction to go in. Thank you.
Thank you for presentation.
Okay, Mr. Littleton?
Thank you.
Thank you, young lady queen.
Thank you.
I have one for him, and if the engineer wants one, he can have one to look at too. I will ask the attorney to, the second page is a homework for him, if he would fill that out while I'm talking real quick, it won't take you but just a second, and I'll refer back to that in just a minute, and we'll, we'll see what we come up with.
I don't need to study for this?
No, I don't think so. You've probably passed most of your tests already. For those of y'all that don't know me, my name's Michael Littleton, I grew up here in Chilton County, was born in Jimson, went to school in Jimson, and go to church at Jimson, I still live there, I go to church with Alan, so I would like to thank y'all for letting me come in and talk. First thing I wanna point out is, everything I've heard tonight is money-related. What we provide costs nothing to the county. It's a benefit for your employees, it's an optional benefit for them to opt-in, it is payroll-deducted, or we can sign them up where they direct pay. That would be up to y'all how to administer it, if we decide to offer this. I don't have my speech memorized, so I'm gonna kind of look down a little bit, I'm sorry about that, but I'm very new to this as far as presenting to a crowd, so bear with me a little bit. I am an employee benefits specialist for Legal Shield and ID Shield. I know my time's limited. I have provided each of you with a portfolio of services, and I've asked the county attorney to fill out his one form. We'll discuss that more in a second. As far as our company, you can see on the front page, we was established in 1972. We were established out of a need. Our founder was in a car accident, a lady crossed the yellow line, hit him head-on, she was cited with a citation, and then she sued him. And this happens in America all over, that, you know, lawsuit, we're in a lawsuit, happy world, so to speak. But it almost bankrupted him and his family. He searched everywhere for a legal service that he could get into, other than direct attorneys, because of the cost of the attorneys, and this was 1968, I think, when the accident actually happened. So cost back then was not even what it is now. But he could not find anybody, and in fact, there, there still is nobody other than us that provides this service. Our mission is to protect and empower our members and to provide equal access to everyone in the legal system. We have over 4 million members protecting around 14 million lives. That's including their families and kids and stuff like that. We have about 34,000 companies that use us for employee benefits right now, all across America. We have been around for 48 years, and like I said earlier, no other company has been able to duplicate our services. The average law firm that we use has been with us for approximately 22 years, and we have almost 7,000 attorneys operating in all 50 states that provide this service. If somebody signs up for Legal Shield and our ID Shield, they are covered in all 50 states. It's not a local coverage, so if you travel or whatever. And we're A-plus rated by the VVV and numerous magazines, including Forbes and Bloomberg. We've been represented in those magazines for several times. So to talk about our plans just a little bit, on the portfolio of services on the back page, it has some of these things listed out, I'm gonna just hit the high points. We have one family plan, it covers you, your spouse, and up to 10 children for one cost. For Legal Shield, it provides unlimited phone consultations/advice, letters, phone calls of your, on your behalf, contract and document review. We also throw in a will for the owner of the contract and the spouse, which can be updated once a year as your needs and or family changes. We handle moving traffic violations for the owner. Not so much to get them out of the ticket, it's not about that, but our driver's license is our livelihood and we work. And so our job is to try to keep points off of their record, if that's going to school, if that's going to whatever. But it's just to keep the points off the license primarily. We do offer IRS audit protection and trial defense up to 60 hours per year, that's cumulative for the first five years. So after five years of being a member, you have 300 hours of legal representation. After 90 days, we also represent in an uncontested divorce, name changes, and even adoptions. So that's something for, you know, if somebody's thinking about adopting, that can be covered under your plan. Everything else is covered at a 25% discount for the member, okay? The ID Shield is very simple, straightforward, however, we are just not a credit monitoring service like most companies provide. We also monitor your driver's license, passport, medical ID, black market websites, social media websites, et cetera. Pretty much, if it can be monitored and it's online, we can monitor it. We use Crawl, which has been monitoring the military for years, so they're the number-one identity theft company in America. An identity is stolen about every 30 seconds, and ID theft has been the number-one crime in America for several years running. At ID Shield, the largest difference between us and our competitors is that we allow the member to sign a temporary power of attorney that gives the investigator rights to go in and basically represent you wherever he needs to go and restore your credit. If you try to do that yourself, the average time is about four and a half months, it's a lot of- If you try to do that yourself, the average time is about four and a half months, it's a lot of days out of work, et cetera, a lot of stress on the, on the person too. Um, and we have a five-million-dollar guarantee to, uh, restore your credit to pre-theft status. Okay, so we, we wanna get it to where it's supposed to be, and this is an entire family as well. Going back to the questionnaire, I know y'all kinda glanced over that. Have, have you finished it, Mr. Bates?
Yeah.
What was the number that you came, uh, you can, you can tell me.
Well, if I understood your question, I came up nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
A year?
Yeah.
For the family?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sixteen hundred and twenty-five dollars a month.
Okay.
That, I don't know if that's close to what.
It's probably seventeen.
Huh?
I thought it was seventeen, so we're pretty, I need to go work for you.
Did you really?
Yeah.
It's probably pretty close. Um, our Legal Shield plan for the entire family for a month is twenty-three ninety-five under the group benefits, twenty-three dollars and ninety-five cents, that's it.
A month?
A month. And our ID Shield plan for the family is eighteen ninety-five a month, under the group benefits. Again, this is no cost to y'all, and, and they can opt-in, they can opt-out, there's no contracts. Um, we do have, we do sign the county up as a group benefit, and then as you hire and get rid of employees, it can, they can be added and taken off at will, okay? Um, we also, to make things even better, uh, we have about four hundred, four hundred and fifty companies that provide our members with perks and discounts at their retail motels. Um, for example, we use, my family, me and my wife, uh, use Verizon, we get an eight percent discount through Verizon on a three hundred dollar phone bill, that's about twenty-four dollars a month, well, that covers your Legal Shield plan. So basically, if you sign up for the one perk, you get your legal plan for free, it costs nothing, okay? Um, and if you use frequently, you can, you, you can save even more money, uh, per month to, you know, pay for your ID Shield plan as well. Um, all this, again, is offered at no cost to employer, uh, while increasing employee attendance at work and decreasing stress on the employee, uh, with the, when these top matters arise. Uh, where I work, this is my, this is my transition to this company, um, where I work currently, uh, my full-time job, we have people have to take off all the time speeding tickets, we had a lady, she got pulled over in a city, and her sister had gave her date of birth and name, and of course, she had a warrant swear out for her, and it wasn't even her, she missed a couple of days of work getting her license reinstated, having to go to court, things like that, and it was not even her fault. And they would've went in and fixed all that for her if, if she would've had the benefit. Um, the legal plan also, which is the most important thing, I think, it has a rider included in it that any county employee cannot use Legal Shield against their employer, okay? So y'all are protected in that. They, they can, they can still hire an attorney and sue you, it just can't be through Legal Shield, okay? Um, I just wanna thank you for your attention, and, uh, you know, y'all can vote on it or let me know.